Okay, today we're having a work-study about the host fund, COVID extension.
Mr. President?
Benefits, yes.
Could you pull the microphone down so we can all hear you fine, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is that better?
It's much better, sir.
I thought you could read lips. Yeah, so we're gonna have a work-study about the host fund and COVID extension benefits and the possible flag, new flag for the town. In this meeting, we can't make any decisions, but we can chat about them all. Before we start on the host fund, I'd like to say a few words about it, then everybody else can comment. So I've been looking at all these papers, and I feel the town should try to run itself as if we didn't have a host fund. A lot of other towns don't have that, and I know what the result of that is. To have the nice things we have, we either have to raise taxes and have more people to buy land and extend the population of the town. So in trying to do that, we're very lucky to have a host fund. We've managed to save a good amount of money, but I think we should try to curb that spending and taking money out of the host fund. And in doing that, I think when we do our budgets, I think we ought to have the host fund budget at the same time, so we can all talk together about it. I think an ideal thing to take out of the host fund would be like if I was an entrepreneur and I wanted to start a business. Geez, I'm sitting up here with, I'm running the bank, the host fund, and I want to start a casino. And if the casino makes any money, it brings money back into the host fund, that's a good project, for an example. So I think easy, easy things to take out of the host fund are monies that would be returned back into the host fund, like the swimming pool. If we needed to do something to increase the amount of people that pay money to go in there, that would be something like I'm talking about. I'm speaking in generalities here and feelings I have. We have four other people that will make their thoughts known. So that's what I got to start with. If anybody else wants to say anything, I know there's a lot of questions here. Somebody would like to say something?
I'll just make some general comments. A lot of what you said, Tom, I probably agree with. I think the, I, what really grabbed my attention, if we look at what was provided to us in the packet for this, is that, let's see here, at the end of 2018, this fund had a little over 1.1 million. At the end of 2019, and if I'm not reading this right, please correct me, the end of 2019, it was a little over a million. At the end of 2020, it was 838,000. And based on what we've got budgeted for this year, we're gonna be all the way down to 182,000. And so, not even looking at all the details, that kind of caught my attention, that we're basically running through what we have in there this year with all of our expenditures. So I guess my general thought is, and this is probably, probably goes without saying, that anywhere we can cut things and really just make sure we're using it, you know, for things that are needed versus things that are wanted. I had a conversation with Will yesterday, and he, and Mark as well, clarified a couple of things for me. One of them being that we'll probably come under a lot of these budgeted items, and that it possibly represents a worst-case scenario. But I think to Tom's point, you know, we have, and it's not, it's not easy to do overnight, but I think we do have to start operating in some way, as if we don't have this, and at least have that in our mind, so that we can use this for special projects that come up that will benefit, you know, everybody. So, and I'm not saying that things on here are not important. It's just a matter of where does it come from, who should be paying for it, where should the funds come from? So I guess those are my general opening comment on that.
I just have a procedural question, and that is, will we be going line by line on the host request tonight?
Might as well. It sounds like a good idea to me.
One thing that wasn't added that was approved by you guys as a host priority project at the end of 2020 was the amount that we're giving additional to the chamber, which is $7,000, and that wasn't listed here as a priority project. I wanted to make you guys aware that you had approved that. Total 7,000.
And it's just the 7,000 that comes out of, okay.
The rest of the chamber funding comes out of it.
Okay.
Any comments from you two? Mark, would you like to say something?
No, I think you guys have all covered it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, if you want to go line by line, which is a good idea, let's start. About this paper you just gave us.
That's the cash balances in each fund. Just so you, as of today, I wanted to provide you guys with the cash balances in each fund. So that's just for your records, as a reference point.
Okay. So Tom, I think, I think what we want to do, because this is what's gonna bring us down to that 182 at the end of the year. Is that kind of what you were thinking?
Exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, the host request 2021, one that has a $700,000 of...
Right.
Yeah, all of it.
All right. Community projects, $3,000?
That's money that's used for advertising, for things that we do within the community. I don't know.
Running out against crime.
Yeah, things like that.
Exactly. Where, where did you spend money advertising?
Community cleanup day. We send out flyers for community cleanup, which will be, we've got in another place. We'll spend money on us advertising some of the, like concerts and some of the, we do some park stuff too, don't we? Yeah.
But we haven't used it in the past two years.
Yeah, what we've done the past two years is that came out of each department's budget.
Okay. I was just thinking, now that we have the new sign, that that can take up some of the advertising.
Right.
You know.
I mean, alls, alls I can tell you is, is that the department heads, myself, Clerk Treasure, we provide you guys a list. It, as difficult as it may seem, it is your decision what you approve, what you don't approve, what you cut, what you don't cut. Am I right, Jenny? I mean, it's really their decision, so if you want to, want to strike that, then, I mean, we'll make it work.
Any more comments about?
And you'll know how, you'll know if we feel vehemently about something, because we'll stand up and speak up about it, yeah.
Well, I think, and I don't, I'll just speak for myself, anybody else can jump in, but I don't think the objective is to take away the ability to get things that are important for the town. It's a matter of, I mean, that is an element of it. Do we need it now? Can we wait? But can it come from somewhere else? And, you know, whether it's the professional services, technology fees, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to lead anybody on, but I think Greg has had some feelings about the, the police officer salary coming out of, like, edit and things like that. So I think it's also just making sure that...
And unfortunately, the edit conversation was several months ago during our budget work-study. So, I mean, even though I still feel strongly about that, I mean, you know, I think if some things can be adjusted to where, you know, we're paying for things out of, out of different buckets, as you say, not again saying that, you know, we're saying, "Don't do it," just where are we spending it from, you know, can ultimately lead to us correcting some of those inequities in, in some of those other, other accounts.
I feel comfortable in community projects. We've got community cleanup down there, farther down into the category. We've got the National Night Out down in priority projects, so I don't have a problem pulling that three grand.
All right, Hugh?
Jenny, is there, am I missing something that it's used for?
No.
Okay, because I, I mean, I can't say since I've been town manager that I've used it, so.
So in professional services?
For attorney?
That is attorney fees.
Attorney fees.
And unfortunately, we do not have anywhere else that we can pull it from.
Well, so that's, those are attorney's fees that cover every, you know?
Yes.
I guess, what do other towns do? Like, where do they normally, is that more of a general fund item?
I might take it from their individual department budgets, yes.
Sure.
Some take it from general, non-departmental.
I'd like to just asterisk that one and circle back around to that when we're done.
All right.
And I want to remind you guys, you don't have to make a decision tonight on the host budget. We will put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so no decisions will be made tonight.
That's good.
Like any decisions tonight.
Well, I just, I didn't want you thinking you were going in the council meeting and having to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I got you. All right. Town property man, maintenance and repair, $50,000.
I'll have Barry speak to this. This is, this building is expensive to maintain, unfortunately.
I've been here eight years now, and I've been working on this building for a long time, and I'll give you an example. There's over 500 filters in this building. Just to change the filters in our air handler units is over five grand. So the cost to just run this building is extremely expensive. If we have one hiccup, and you'll see, you know, I'm probably the biggest guy here tonight on this, you know, priority projects, and the reality is, and, you know, there's ways that I can show you that it can pay for itself, but the funding mechanism for this building is the most hardest thing to find, because I've reached out to the county. Kevin Cavanaugh, I know you guys know he's been in here with the TAP fees, they have about 20 times our budget for their facilities. They're in the millions, and we're in the middle thousands. So from this fund is the biggest portion that operates this building. It also, if there are other buildings in the town that need a roof, it will come from this. We usually talk at the beginning of the year, who's gonna need funds for what building, and usually it doesn't come from utilities, they take care of their own buildings. It's usually, whether it's police and fire, police is in the same building, so there are properties that would come out of this that would be maintenance-oriented. I just wanted to give you an example about the, the filters, because when I got here, they were changing them two times a year, and if you get a four-inch media filter, which is a better filter, you can do them once a year, so we moved to that. But really, in a nutshell, that line item, as well as the CCI, take care of the building and other buildings.
How many filters did you say?
I think the last time I counted, there's well over 200.
In this building?
In this building.
That sounds extravagant.
Well, the gymnasium itself has 16 filters that are 22 by 4 inch by 16. They're large air handlers. That space moves a lot of air, so there's quite a few filters in the building, and they're every different size you can imagine. So that makes it even more difficult to change them if you were buying bulk. The first year I was here, we paid a local company, and the cost was like 10,000 a year to change it, so I said, "Let's just buy the filters and change them ourselves." That cut it in half, but it's still, that's just one little piece of the building that's really expensive. You know, that doesn't cover any floor coverings, any paint, I mean, all of that comes out of this, and we do use this building, it gets used, so those things are going to be maintained. And as far as a funding mechanism, I know Mark, myself, Jenny, we've talked about the spaces that we have that are vacant to try to rent those out and maybe use that money to help maintain the building, but we found that it's a little more difficult than what we thought. Maybe not renting the space, but collecting those fees and using them in a way, so. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Next one, anybody have any? Nothing? Public nuisance cleanup.
The public nuisance cleanup is, is money that's used for, like, if we have to board up an abandoned home or whatever. Last year, I think, we utilized some public works funding, we utilized some money out of my own personal, or my, you know, the town manager budget, so I don't even know, it doesn't look like that we've had, used this for a while. I don't have a problem striking, I know it's only $1,000, but I can, I can make it from somewhere else.
Comments? Technology hardware, $100,000. Who's thinking that?
We did raise that due to the One Choice bill. I know you've seen that. We, we kind of spread that bill out into a couple of accounts, and we're trying to kind of corral that towards, you know, being in one account, so we can actually see the totality of what the bill is. So the goal is to, at some point, we would like it to go back into the departments as we kind of grow, once we get to a certain stage, and then the, each department would be more accountable for the total dollars, but that's, you know, we're, we're removed from that right now, but I think that's kind of the goal for the future.
So reviewing that One Choice contract, it was 157,000. So where, where's the other 50,000 coming from? What are their accounts?
So we, it's actually more than that, by the time we pay phones and everything, but we divide that between the general fund, the edit, and host. And the host, we use more for projects, and as we're upgrading things the last couple of years.
So increase due to bill is just as literal as it sounds, right? We're putting that, because they, of that bill, and I apologize if we've talked about this before, were there any?
Were there, sorry, were there any one-time charges or one-time fees that won't be repetitive in any of that?
Most of those fees are annual contracts, services, all those kinds of things. Probably like three-quarters of that bill is actually something we would pay anyways, whether we had one choice or not.
Okay.
So it, just with technology, I mean, those fees are just gonna continue to grow. There's, it doesn't go the other way.
And I was just wondering if it went up in this particular year because we had to get new this or new that?
Some computers, and then police, we did add the E3 licenses to the police because the state reporting required them to have full Microsoft access. So that one's kind of a little bit, but the police, I think, did pay for last year's service of that, so they kind of made a good faith effort last year to get started on it, so.
You're doing a great job.
Grant match, $10,000.
This is something new. I don't know, do you know the last time we had grant match money in there? When was it?
We've always done that.
What, have we? Okay, I didn't, I know we, I didn't see anything for 1920 that we used any, so, but yeah, it, sometimes we'll go after a grant that, that maybe the departments don't have the matching funds to, to do it, and so it would come out of this fund. Is that right, Jenny?
Correct.
Do we know when the last time we did use that?
I have, no.
I just wondered if 10,000 was enough in that category.
Depends on what we're asking for.
I got you.
Our last grant that we matched was, how much was it, Andy? How much was it? $107,000, but we, that came out of some paving and, you know, enviation and those types of funds. So again, it, this is more of a, what I want to say, miscellaneous, does that sound right? Where, Jenny, I need your help on this. I, I know you're laughing underneath that mask at me.
So it is miscellaneous. A lot of grants require, like on Andy's grants, that it comes out of paving and different things. We've used host a little bit for the bulletproof vests, matching grants. What else have we used it for, Jim, for the police department? Okay. Yes, exactly. And we haven't had an IPAP in a couple of years, have we?
We just got one.
Okay, this year?
Yep. In fact, they'll be here tonight, I believe.
Next one is...
It's good to have if something comes up that we would like to apply for. It's good to have funds available that we can use as matching. And then if we don't use it, it just...
All right, thank you. Retiree insurance fund?
So we no longer do that. We were looking at, for the employees that had 35 years of service and greater, that weren't yet 65 or 66 to qualify for Medicare, we were looking at offering, years ago, a opportunity for them to have retiree insurance. We saw a lot of communities doing that, and so we were trying to offer the same. We have since decided with half's help and others that it just no longer makes sense. It's, it's quite a liability issue when you extend that out.
Any comments?
That's, that's no longer.
Okay. Tree advisory, $18,000.
So the tree advisory, to be a Tree City USA, you have to have $2 or double your population in dollars dedicated towards trees, and so that's really for the number there, the 18,000. Actually, it should be 18,002, I guess, but versus the census. But yeah, we're, we're working to get that in Daisha, I guess, again, Tree City this, this year, actually, we think we'll get it, and it's something we've been doing. We're also looking at a project down Main Street to look at adding trees down Main Street to try to bring back that canopy, because we're starting to get a little bit concrete-heavy over trees, so there should be some, some projects coming your way to where you'll actually see those dollars used for not just cutting down trees and safety, but also adding trees back, so.
So would that line item be one that you guys would classify as it's, it's there as a budget item, but we probably don't actually ever spend that much?
We spend quite a bit of it. Sometimes, like last year, we didn't spend it all the way down, and this year, we should actually spend it, because we're doing some proactive things as far as planting trees, and I think we've got a decent board, and they should start using the dollars for good, we'll say.
Okay.
Cutting a tree down is not a cheap thing.
Yeah, and our town requirements actually require you to plant two trees for every tree we take down, so.
Did not know that.
Yeah.
We're just kind of, we're a little bit more selective about where we plant it. Because sometimes they were planted over infrastructure, and the roots get into the water and wastewater.
First problem?
Yes.
I'll be darned.
So when that tree goes, we, we maybe go down to Aiken Park and plant a couple trees, you know, yeah.
I see what you're planting.
Yeah.
All right. Downtown revitalization, $10,000.
Most of this is used for, whether it be the, trying to think, like the, the planter boxes, the flowers, things like that, some banner stuff. Yeah, the benches, the light posts, trash cans. I don't know why I'm not turning this mic over to him, but that's what the money's used for.
Fountain maintenance.
I'm gonna definitely...
Since there, Will is going to fix it.
I'm gonna turn this over to him.
I'm gonna bring that thing back alive this year.
Why?
Well, I think it is a nice feature. I know Lisa agrees with me on that. Water department would probably not say that they agree with that. If, if we bring it back and it's in good shape, then it may be something the park is willing to possibly take over, just because we already run the pool, it's the same kind of option as the pool, except less maintenance. And I think it's, it's an afterthought, where it wouldn't be for us, it would be a routine item, because it's got an automatic chlorinator and some other stuff. It just depends on if it has that leak that they say it has, that, that will be the big kicker, but I'd like for it to be a little bit more fountain-like instead of bubbling too, so. I'm gonna look at it and see if I can get in there and, and make some stuff happen, so.
Could you do a corporate sponsorship for the fountain?
Anything is possible when funds are...
Danville Square Fountain presented by...
If we only had a fountain company in town.
By Edward Jones.
Yeah. I like it.
Is there some question about who owns that fountain between the county and us?
No, we do.
Didn't we run through that one time?
The question became about who owns the bison.
Yeah, the question was, who owned the bison? As it turned out, the county owns the bison. We had no idea, but the county owns the bison, and we paid to have it painted.
I see it's come back to feed now.
They asked if they could have it back once they found out it was theirs, so they...
Looks like it's well taken care of.
We were more than happy to, to allow them to get their own property back.
All right. Next one. Broadband fiber maintenance, $5,000.
So this is money that's used, again, I'm not sure, we didn't use all of it last year, but this is like if, if there's a cut and we have to fix it, we have to pay to have that fixed. We have to pay Endeavor to get the, the broadband back up and running. Sometimes we'll pay, is it EDH? Is that right? JDH, which is a contracting service, but yeah, anytime the fiber's cut and we can't pin it on somebody else, believe me, we try, then we have to pay for it ourselves. Sometimes it gets cut and nobody, it's truly, nobody knows how it happened. You're like, "Really?", you know, so, but, but that's what that money's for.
All right. Downtown partnership, we know quite a bit about that. Any more discussion on that? Do we...
That money's already pretty much committed, isn't it, Jenny?
Do we still have thoughts about marrying that with the chamber?
It's really, I mean, we're a fiscal body or a fiscal contributor of those two bodies. A lot can be controlled with money, obviously, but I don't, I know they are, they're in discussion, I don't know.
Each board, each has a board, so the boards would have to agree. But it's, it's definitely on the table.
Okay. Opticom.
I'll let Chief Roberts speak to this.
That's that big siren in the park?
So I think he's got two things on here. He's got the opticom maintenance and the siren maintenance. The optcoms are the traffic signal diverters, and then the sirens, obviously, are the early warning sirens.
That's why Rob's up here for the opticom.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Rob.
You guys approved a couple meetings ago for, to purchase the optcoms for the rest of the stoplights through town. I did order those today, and we should have those in two or three weeks. Then the maintenance is for the tornado warning sirens and the optcoms. Unfortunately, you have that big tornado siren sitting up there in all kinds of weather. That siren rotates around, and through the years, we have issues with the rotation. You have battery backup, you have a radio control in the box. in the box, and sometimes those go bad. And that's what this maintenance, uh, six thousand dollars is for, for the sirens and the optcoms.
So, uh, the sirens and the opt-coms, that's Optimus Prime, right?
Yeah.
Those are, are, are all of those in the town limits? Are we maintaining any that are in the county?
No, they're all in the town limits.
Okay.
Tornado warning sirens, to be quite honest with you, I would absolutely love to get out of that business. Um, we're trying to push that off on the emergency management, because most communities, that's who controls those. But in Hendricks County, the fire departments are responsible for those.
Do you have any idea what a, what it would take to replace, the cost to replace one of those sirens?
I do believe the last time we bought them was over twenty thousand dollars each. Don't quote me on this, but I think we have nine.
Is there any, um, path in the future for that to be absorbed into, uh, fire budget?
Well-
And I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying is that in the future, you know, as, as more revenue and stuff like that comes in, that, that-
As long as there's more revenue, because right now my budget's like eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And that's my operating budget for the town.
Yep. But if there was more budget, then that could easily come off of host and into, into that if there was more revenue.
Right.
Okay.
With the exception of replacing them.
Right.
Or, I mean, yeah, if we had to have a new one, twenty thousand dollars, that's a lot coming out of the budget.
It, it seems kind of, and I may not, I may be all wrong, but it seems kind of old fashioned to me to, to have a siren that's like, you know, a horn. When, we've got all this capacity with the, um, you know, our computer systems.
But it's an outdoor warning system, so you may not be out there with your phone, you may not have a radio out there. It's to, to alert you when you're outside. It's not to alert you while you're inside.
Right. I'm just thinking, it just seems old fashioned.
I kind of understand what Nancy's saying. We, it seems like everybody has one of these, and every time there's an alert, we know that. Uh, they are an older type system, you know, been around since civil defense when I was a kid. Um, maybe we're in a transition period where maybe in a few years we won't need them. But I understand what you're saying if you're outside, but generally everybody has a phone with them.
And hopefully in a few years I can pawn this off on the EMA.
Let's hopefully you get your wish.
Yes.
Yeah, you should try very hard.
We have been.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, we can probably handle the next two together.
Handle the next two together. Okay, bonds. Transfer to park bonds and transfer to series bond. That's your, your Bailey Wick. Any comments from?
So this is to offset our circuit breaker, and it's money that of course goes towards paying the bonds, offset the property tax circuit breakers.
Is that a forever item?
So the bonds are paid off.
Uh, do, what's the?
I think we owe four more ye-, what are we on the park for, bonds?
Five or twenty-six.
And the communication bond is, do you know Rob, off the top of your head, what the communication bond is? I'm gonna say it's with six more years.
Okay.
Greg, you have anything to say about bonds?
Nope.
Anybody else? Thank you. Fourth of July Rib Fest. Twenty-four thousand. That's fourth of July and the Rib Fest, which is usually ten thousand apiece.
So it was increased last year to the twenty-four thousand because of the anticipation of the Rib Fest being held at the fairgrounds. We've always in the past donated ten thousand dollars to the Chamber for their fireworks. Since we had allocated those funds to the Rib Fest and to the Chamber and the Rib Fest didn't coming, we upgraded our fireworks at the Chamber. So I haven't been given a definite answer on if the Rib Fest is coming, and then there's been a lot of discussion of is that our responsibility, you know, to fund the fireworks? And Kelly and I have spoken a couple of times, of course, she would like to have as much money as she can to have a good fireworks show.
I always thought it was a bit redundant to have fireworks one week and then have them again. Maybe that's something we could look at.
The, uh, we've not been contacted by the Rib Fest folks since they canceled it last year. Uh, I did reach out to the Hendricks County Fairgrounds to see if they knew if it was going to try. They did advise me that they have a meeting next week, uh, with the Rib Fest folks, but the Rib Fest, the, the, and it's not the fairgrounds' responsibility, the Rib Fest people have not reached out to us to ask us for money. And it's up to you, but, you know, we're in budget process now, and if this isn't something you want to fund, then we can tell them we're sorry, but, you know, we've already done our budget. I, I really, that won't give me a bit of heartache, I'm just gonna be completely candid with you. And, um, and what you guys decide to do for the Chamber will be between you and, and Jenny, and I, I mean, I, I really-
Aren't you the cookers of that?
No.
No?
No, sir. Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, it's, I, I-
That was gonna be like a brand new thing last year.
Yes, it was.
Wasn't it normally in Avon?
Yeah.
We know if Avon paid for it when it was in Avon?
They, they had done some sponsor. I know Will's got a, probably an in on that. Uh, but Avon did provide some sponsorship, and, I mean, word was is that because Avon was going to discontinue, that was one of the reasons they wanted to come and try Danville. That sound right to you?
Maybe they could try brands.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, you know, it, it's, it's a double edged sword. It, it's great to bring the attention to Danville, but the fact of the matter is, all of that's going to be held within the confines of the fairgrounds. It's not like people are gonna, it's a Rib Fest, they're gonna go there to eat, they're not gonna go to our local restaurants. And, and I'm not saying we won't get food and beverage money from it, but you know, a-again, it's not like they're visiting our facilities. But, again, I, I'm easy either way, truly. Um, you know, um, in all seriousness, and Jenny, I know you and I haven't talked, but if, if you, if you thin this line item, that could be that seven thousand dollars you guys are looking for, for the additional funding for the Chamber. Would you agree, or?
Yeah, yeah. The Chamber funding is a priority project, but it, yeah, it could absolutely make up the difference.
Okay.
But I do need for you guys to be thinking about how much you want to fund the Chamber for their fireworks. We've always done ten thousand last year.
Right. And, and again, we can, it, this really isn't one of those that you see anybody jumping up and down about, so.
Well, and I, for what it's worth, I thought what we did last year here, because it was, because it didn't happen, I thought was a really good program.
Oh, with the-
Food trucks and the fireworks, so.
I agree.
I, I'd almost rather see that, and it obviously wasn't twenty-four thousand dollars for us, so.
Right, yeah.
Since we can't make any decisions tonight, do we just want to make that one yellow and revisit it?
You, you can still give us recommendation, right? I mean, Jewel, they can, they can advise us how they would like us to prepare the budget for final approval. Right, right. So, I, I would recommend to Jenny how you wanna, however you guys want to swing this.
Split them up, so we recommend one and recommend the other, or don't recommend one, and-
I was thinking we would not recommend one of them. I recommend the Chamber Commerce fireworks on the fourth of July, but not the Rib Fest.
That's good, where I'm leaning to.
And, and how much would you like to provide the Chamber?
I said we go back to fourteen, since that worked last year.
Alright.
So Will, now that I see what you're doing there, can you also highlight, yellow the technology and hardware, please?
Down. Here.
Thank you.
Do we need any more discussion on that?
So would you like Jenny to go ahead and move then? No, okay, never mind.
I got it.
She's got it? I stand corrected. Thank you.
She's on the ball.
Yeah.
Community cleanup.
The thousand dollars for this is, uh, what we utilize to, um, put together the flyers for the community cleanup day. Um, I think this year, it probably will be a little bit different. I think they're looking at an entire month instead of a day. So you'll get a, in your water bill, you'll get a voucher that you'll be able to go any day with whatever you have, instead of just having one specific day. So Waste Management's trying to make it a little easier for everybody to, to work with, but, um, that's what we use that money for, is to put the flyer in with the water bills.
Last year it was three hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six.
Alright. Square maintenance, fifty thousand dollars.
Andy's probably a little new to answer to this. Uh, the square maintenance money is, uh, helps repair sidewalks, um, it, it repairs like the, the, the lack of conduit, am I saying that right, Rob? Some of the wiring was put in with no conduit. And so when we have a break, we have to go in, make it right, and that's what this money's for. It's, it's basically any maintenance around the square that has to be done.
Last year it was a lot of electrical work.
Yeah.
It does seem quite-
Ferguson Best Hardware, so parts.
So it does look, uh, compared to actual for nineteen and twenty, it looks large. I mean, are we anticipating some, some larger items from around the square?
We had talked about, um, actually redoing sides of the square. Um, they're in pretty bad compliance with ADA as far as like movement and where the tree locations and stuff are, so we had talked about that in the host meeting, as this is maybe the chance to put in the plans to start redoing each side of the square, so.
Would fifty get us all four sides or just one?
Ah, there you go.
Only the outside.
There you go. Just, oh, just, not even the inside, just the outside.
And, and Jenny, I, I don't know, has fifty always been budgeted? We just haven't spent it, or was it ninety at one point?
So in twenty eighteen it was ninety, and then nineteen and twenty, it was fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, okay.
Alright. Sidewalk maintenance, nothing. GIS mapping, twenty-one thousand.
The GIS mapping's in two different payments. Uh, one, we pay Schneider Geospatial directly for our portion of what's called Beacon, which I'm sure most of you've seen Beacon. It, it, it has all of our, our overlays and, and all our pipes and everything else. And then the other half of that money, we pay to Hendricks County, uh, through a gr-, an agreement that you, I think you guys signed either last year or the year before. Uh, we pay them ten thousand dollars a year for the flyovers, so that, uh, when we do the, uh, the actual maps that you can see, um, and, and it's actually, um, it's, it's broke down over a six-year period. So there's actually, they only fly every other year, but so that it's not such a substantial outlay every year, it's broken down, uh, even on the years they don't fly, we make a payment.
Thank you. Bank fees. Nothing this year.
Yes, since we switched our banking and we now make it first income, so that has gone from being fees to receiving income.
Wonderful. So as we go down, so the total for twenty-one is six hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
It's actually been reduced now to six forty-one, four seventy-eight, since we've cut some of the funding out.
Alright. And now we've run, run down to priority projects.
Can I make a quick, before we go down that, can I, uh, as we're going down through those, uh, could you identify, if possible, um, how many of these items are either one-offs or infrequent? Because I guess one of my thoughts is, however we deplete this this year-
Right.
We're not gonna spend the exact same on all these priority projects in twenty-two.
Yep, we can do that.
So the, the question I have before we hit this list, do we want to discuss the Junior Football League, which came in and made a pitch to you guys? Uh, we don't have that on this list. It's, uh, we did not put it on here. Um, so it's up to you if you want to discuss it now, or do you want to discuss it at the end of this?
We can talk a little bit about it now.
Okay. Jenny, you have any thoughts?
Well, we just need to start with the seven thousand dollars to the Chamber as the definite.
Okay.
We could add that. What did you, when you went up there, what did you change the fireworks to?
Uh, it would be fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, that's perfect, yeah. And then if you could just-
So is this going in?
Yes, yes. That's how it was approved in the minutes.
Right.
That's how we paid the first quarter. Annual, yep, for the year. And this, this is a one-time.
I was just gonna ask you.
One time for twenty-five. Thank you, Will.
What's the, what is the, um, what's going on right now with the football, the Junior Football League thing?
Bill has a presentation for you.
I just thought it would make things a bit clearer, kind of put together a slideshow. So, uh, kinda after the last meeting, I was tasked with getting an appraisal for the property and kind of like summing up some of those little loose ends, so that you guys can have a better picture of, uh, what we're looking at. And kind of, this is a rough timeline of what I think, from what we talked about. We did gain some ground with, uh, the water department. It's gonna start July first, so that gives us, and they're starting with the tanks, so that actually buys us more time, uh, for the project. Uh, and then just some of the things I just kind of laid out. We'll miss baseball season too, so losing that field will be good, because we're gonna lose the field after, because it'll be July first. So after July first, we'll, you know, not have a baseball field on that north side, but, um, and then just kind of laying out the guesstimate on some of the stuff. They're gonna start with the tank July first, so that's when the initial construction will start. Um, and then football can kind of survive through their location. Uh, they're gonna make do for this season. It may be a little messy, but, uh, we're gonna make it work. And, you know, after football season, we need to look towards, uh, the baseball as well. Jumping into the next one, here's the actual request. I know it's kind of hard to read, and I made copies for you, but you gotta have a magnifying glass to be able to read them. The font wasn't very friendly. Uh, but pretty much a summary is a requesting for a hundred and forty-nine, nine-nine-nine-nine upfront, uh, with the request of them paying back, uh, a minimum of fifty thousand dollars through funds raised, um, at a maximum of three years. Uh, they will pay it off earlier. If they do, um, come up with the funds quicker, and I feel like they are in a good stance to where they can bring in those dollars a little quicker. Um, and so the funds will never actually leave the town. The funds will actually be, the park will kind of oversee the funds, so that it's not, you know, money actually exchanging hands. It's, it's the building, it's getting built for it. So it's kind of like you're dedicating more of the, that the building is gonna get built over the dollars. It's, it's the building that's getting built for it. So it's kinda like you're dedicating more of, that the building is going to get built, over the dollars. That's kind of a summary of the request. I did get the appraisal, but we also have to keep into, in our minds that we are losing a baseball field as well. So I kinda just did a summary of what it would cost to put a baseball field in, with some of those dollars. We did, appraisal came in around $58,000. But it would be nice if we could use those funds towards replacing the baseball fields. That's just a park request, I would say. Uh, options, this is kinda where we are today. You know, what do we look at as far as funding? Yeah, I just laid four out here, in no, I guess, kinda particular order, I guess, just from your opinions from the last meeting. Fund project completely through hosts, which gives that flexibility for payback, which we talked about. Fund pod, project through another account, or combined accounts, which is an option as well. And C, use appraisal funds and combine with a combination of other funds, or D, don't fund.
Question.
Yeah, shoot them.
So, money doesn't leave the town. We just spend the money as it's needed, up to $149,999. Then we get money back from DJLF, if I said that right. Is there a max on what they'll give back to us?
There's not, not really a max. It's just split over the, it's split the whole time. So 50, every dollar they raise, 50 cents here, 50 cents there. You know, so really, if you think about it, the way they're setting it up, really, they kinda have to raise 100, the way they're saying it, because if 50% ours, yeah.
Just to get 50,000. So the max we could get back from them is 75,000?
There's really no max.
Okay.
They could raise 200, yeah.
And we would get-
They could fund the whole project, really.
Okay, I just want to make sure there would be no, that they're not going to stop at some point, when they reach a certain threshold.
No, and they, they seem pretty passionate about it as well. So I think that kinda helps. And some of those grants, we're going to try to help them as much as we can, because it benefits us to, you know, kinda buy down the host fund, so that we're not using the host fund as much. And maybe we could just put all that money back, you know, at the end. You know, that would be the grand scheme. But this is worst-case scenario, you know, out there. But knowing that they are kind of, no matter what, you know, they're on the hook for 50,000. So at, at the max, you'd be at the, what, 99,999?
With the baseball season being done, right, is that what you said, before we do any of this? Is that a, a cost that can be pushed off to '22?
Yeah, I mean, I, the only problem is, is with that, can I get it to where it's playable in '22? That would be my own question, because they, you know, they play in March, pretty much. It is the Little League, the littlest guys' field, so that is kind of a benefit, I would say, because the standards aren't as high. But, you know, that's not to say that we couldn't start even earlier than that. It's just trying to do dirt work when it's, you know, negative 20 out is not fun. But if we have to, that's what we'll do. And I kinda just laid out, you can kinda see the power plant. You guys have all seen this before. Water plant.
I like how you think. Maybe we can produce our own power now.
I thought maybe it'd been the French lipped.
We're gonna paint it in camo and try to hide it. And there's trees and stuff gonna go in here too, to try to hide that ugliness. So, and then.
The, the current tower would stay then, right?
Yeah, and what we do is kinda repurpose the current tower. And the goal is, either Pee-wee or Little League, you know, we would go back to them. And then now, because the fences, the fences are all the way around the leagues, they can actually maintain their own spaces, which is really nice. You know, hey, you're responsible for this. You know, we could do, I don't know, possible lease-out for a dollar, or whatever we want to do, and kinda just hold them accountable for their spaces. And then now, that'll free up my staff to be able to do more things. I don't know what's going on with this computer too. It's acting a little funny. So here's kinda the grandioso plan. I can make split screen.
It's circling back to you.
Yeah. Okay, so the grand plan, and this is the master plan for Aiken Park. You guys have probably seen this before, but we're pretty much building this little guy right here. And then these two fields. Which they're kinda already there.
What about the baseball?
You what? Uh, so we, originally, we put both on the table, but the baseball, you're looking at a million dollars. So that's why we went back to football, because we just would never be able to do that. It, it, we would love to, because that would help with Ellis Park congestion. But at the same time, it's easier for the football move, just because it's way less expensive.
So I'm going to make a comment on that, I guess, and, and I know I'm going to jump ahead with, with my comment, is that, you know, we have a lot of people head down to the parks. You know, not everybody has little kids, but grandparents, you know, parents, the kids. I haven't seen any of those kids roaming the halls here at the Town Hall. And the host money, in my opinion, needs to be used for the good of the community. A chiller benefits the employees and, you know, those of us that have to come into the Town Hall. So I look at the funding of those types of items, not saying we don't fund those, because we, I think we should. I just think it's to how we should be funding those. The host money comes from Waste Management. Other monies that we have comes from property taxes. So I think that the movement of the football fields, you know, makes sense. I think it makes sense to come from host. I think a chiller should be coming from our rainy day fund. It's a one-off. It, that rainy day fund came from taxpayer money, and should be used to maintain, you know, this building. And that probably even goes towards, you know, roof gutters, downspouts, and a awning. Those are my thoughts on, on that. That's quite a bit of money. I mean, that's 300, that's $305,000 just in chiller and gutters that would come out of the host budget. You know, we have $800,000 sitting there not earning anything, and then we don't even have the option to invest that money. Not like we have in the host. You know, we can use some of our laziest money first, you know, and we'd still have half a million dollars sitting in our rainy day fund. So, thank you.
All right. You want to go through these priority projects now? DPW, road impact fees?
Want to add priority list?
I would, I would say that we had that.
Okay. Guess we can add it, but we don't have to spend it.
Well, I'm kinda optimistic about getting a lot of that money back, because, you know, they're going to be playing this summer at their original place, and they're going to be fundraising all summer. And people, people are really generous, as the police department knows. So.
Them like football.
Yeah.
And you, you have some really good movers and shakers in that group too, which is nice.
All right. DPW, road impact fees, $125,000.
So we've been working on this project for a while. We're down to the point where we needed to, to make a decision here soon on, do we move forward on this or not? This money actually can go, once money starts to come in, we actually can pay this back. So my goal is, it's at 125, because he was on the high end, but he also slipped up and told me it's 100 to 125. So he's going to be going for the 100. And, and that would kinda be the goal, is if we do it right, and so it's a year after is the implementation, we might be able to pay it back the same year that we enacted. So that would kinda be the goal, is hopefully, you know, we got that break even. So it's just money out, money back in. But a lot of money back in.
All right. Chiller remodel.
Think of the roofs first, Mr. President.
Oh, the roof, yeah, the roof, small print.
I'll let Mary. So, we've been working on the roof thing for a while. When we did the roof over here on the main part of the building, was 2016. And in 2017, 2018, 2019, we did an agreement, a maintenance agreement on the Bostic gym. So we're a year past that maintenance agreement. We went up, I went up a couple months in the winter, a couple months in the summer. And I've got some pictures. I don't know if you want to see them, but I really would like for you to see them. All I gotta do is show you two, and you guys will see the condition. It's well past its life expectancy. These roofs usually generally only last about 20 years. And the pipe down is about 45 pack, so that would probably done. What happens is, in the summertime, it expands. In the wintertime, it shrinks. And in the wintertime, it starts to rip and tear, and that's what you see in these pictures. Pretty self-explanatory. It's, my job's easy, is to tell you that we need a new roof. Your job is hard to find out where we're going to come up with $100,000. So the roof is really important, because we just remodeled the gym. And we probably should have done it reverse, but at the time, we, there, there wasn't any funds there, and we had a mechanism to try to stay ahead of the roof. But it literally is falling apart. In my world, that's number one on the list. But the other thing that I can say about that, there is going to be a return on this investment. We're probably going to gain about 20% energy efficiency through that roof with this new roof. Same thing goes with the chiller, but I'll address that when you guys get to that item. We came in, the very first one was two or three years ago. It was like $200,000 on this roof. As times went on, and that's paying a company to come in and oversee and do things. This is us going out and doing the contract or the estimate ourselves, and watching this get built. There is a warranty with this. It's 20 years. That's a standard roof warranty for. TPO is what we expect on this project. It's white. It reflects sunlight, which gives you energy efficiency. So that's really all I have on that part of it. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Chiller's yours as well?
Unfortunately, yes. Chillers are unlike a roof. You can't really see what's inside the chiller. I bet we've spent over $25,000 in the last three years trying to maintain that thing. We've replaced a compressor. And at some point, you have to say, okay, we gotta cut our losses, and that's really where I'm coming to you guys at. And now, I spoke to Mark almost every day in the summertime, because they don't run. Everybody in this building realizes, you know, when it's hot, we know that that chiller's not running. Long story short, this is a very big-ticket item. We do have a rebate on this that guarantees us $25,000 rebate through Duke Energy, but we have to be at a certain efficiency. So by the time you do the math, and this math is done, and these are, these are pretty solid numbers, we will gain 25% efficiency on that chiller. I got a price to rebuild it from the company that manufactures it. They wanted $96,000 to rebuild that chiller, and it still be 25 years old. And that does not cover the barrel, which is the part where the transfer of the heat changes. That's the most moving parts. So I didn't think that was an option, so I got the price to replace it, which is $145,000.
Might as well stay up there. There's another building one down here. Water lines and fix it, or throw it away.
So, I don't know if you have any questions, but I'll try to keep pace here.
Pace, because we're, we've got 20, 22 minutes left.
Next thing I think on the list was, for me, I'll just go ahead and jump ahead, if that's okay.
Yep.
Issues is next for you.
I'll make this real quick. Will's well aware of this. All his guys know. We have hot water going through the cold water pipes. There's check valves. This is another area where I can say, I guarantee you savings, because we did this, not this past summer, but the summer previous, we shut the boilers off. That was $785 a month in gas that we saved for six months. So there is a direct return. So this water piping, the water heater blew up, so we couldn't, and we didn't have funds to replace it. It was so late in the year, I didn't think it was economically feasible to do it at that time, so that's why we brought this year. So there's direct return of all these investments. It's just not enough to cover the cost of the, of the equipment. So there's also another part of that is, is environmental health, or actually, you have to have hot water through, running through pipes on the system, so there is an issue there with, with the health issues with not having hot water.
Okay. We're running short. What do you guys got? Now, let me make a comment to Barry. You're a one-man band, aren't you?
Yeah.
You need help. You've got lots of big things going on here. We did offer to give him somebody before.
Retizing for that position here shortly, I believe. Yeah, so.
Three heads, 17 arms, 50 legs. Gonna get a centipede to help you.
So excited, I'm not going to know what to do.
Or an octopus, be working over there, working up there. All right. Well, thank you, Barry. You're doing a remarkable job for a one-man band. Okay, pool safety upgrades, updates. Remember, we're running out of time here.
Yeah. But I did do another slide. Well, I mean, this is another one where you have to actually see, because no one goes to the pool when it's not in operation.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
They don't go just to see you?
Actually, on a tour, the, yeah.
Yeah, some people come to see you.
Yeah. Okay, so real quick, let me run through it. So Wes, this has been on there a little bit. Pretty, pretty good-sized issues, and it caused a lot of pain as far as operations go. And really, safety issues. So it's just kind of a breakdown. Of the top here are the urgent ones. That's the ones with the Xs. And then I'll just go through each one real quick. So, normal lifespan of an aquatic center is about 25 years, and yet that's the end. And we're on 16. We've been painting and doing concrete work since the second year. We had, the island is crumbling. You can see my patchwork right here. It's all lumpy. It looks like oatmeal. But it's actually pretty solid, I guess. All the coping is coming off. This is what the lazy river looks like right now, with chipping paint and stuff. And you can see, these are all areas where people's feet touch. Not, not good. And this is actually a marker. The tiles have popped up and out of there. We replace them, but they're like, they need to be done by a professional and not us. So this is just the painting side. And the painting side is pretty expensive, but they're going to blast it all the way down to concrete, and use epoxy and stuff in all the areas. Plainfield does this every three years. We haven't had this done in eight years. So if that kinda tells you the breakdown. I mean, we've made it last, you know, the best we can by painting it ourselves and doing that kinda stuff. But it's getting to the point where we're, if you look at this spot right here, there's so much paint that the moisture underneath is actually chipping all of it up. So, and then we're going to start losing water too, when, when you get down to concrete, the evaporation. So that's the painting. Filter media expires after eight years. We're on year 15, going into 16. So that's a pretty important one too, because that's filtering the water. So the less, and we'll use less energy. It'll turn over faster. We'll have to backwash less, which means less water going to Jerry every day that we backwash. So there's just a lot of wins with that one, and it's a safety issue. Because that's what, you know, holds back the bacteria. Slides, we have two 125-foot slides, and they need some maintenance. We have all the copings on the inside, all the grout is going through. So now, when you go down the slides, you get a nice little red burn almost, from them going like doot, doot, doot. They need to be realigned and readjusted. And then also, we're starting to get splintering in the plastic, because it's dry rotting. And you can see that visually just from the outside. You could see the slides look really bad. And so in that project too, is to paint the outside of the slide, so the visual appearance is just as good as the inside. But it also protects the inside. is just as good as the inside, but it also protects the inside. And then, play feature, this is one of the play features, it's in the kiddie area, but that doesn't mean just kids go down it, and that's really the problem. So you can see where the, the bolts are actually popping through, we've epoxied them and tried to make them last, we actually put a rubber mat over this right now to try to keep it alive. This, this top part of the slide, here's the cracks on the bolts there, and then the bottom of the slide, where they come out, there's cracks right there. So, safety issues, once again. Oh, it's freezing up on me now. Yeah, anyways, you can kind of read it for yourself, I'll send this to you after, but...
Okay.
Same thing with the diving board, diving boards, it's made for two-hundred-and-fifty-pound people, it's, today's society is not that, so we just need to make sure that whatever we put to replace that area, it needs to last and be for all to use. And so that's why we kind of had some replacement ideas, instead of replacing it with a diving board, maybe a climbing wall or something a little bit cheaper.
Mark, you going to say something?
Nope, I was just going to thank you.
I see you're healthy, glad to see you back on board.
I am, thank you. I'll make this as quick as possible. Last year, I talked to the staff, all the department heads, about possibly trying to get a large format copier scanner. I believe it's necessary for us to be able to scan large plans, so that we don't have to use up space to store. I know there are requirements where we do have to store them for so many years, but it will also enable us to print plans, you know, that are sent to us electronically. We have five thousand dollars, the, the large format planner, or scanner and plotter is anywhere between ten and twenty, and I believe the utility departments have offered to help pay for that, because they will probably be using it as well. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. President, council members, I'm going to hand out something to you real quick, just an estimate for the CBSA. CBSA computer is basically a computerized voice stress analysis. Pre-employment and... It's a lie detector. Our computer's ten years old, we do use it quite a bit for pre-employment.
We need another one.
You need one more?
Yeah.
Use it for pre-employment. This week alone, I've used it three times. Already this week for pre-employment for the reserve process, and I will be using it again tomorrow morning for two more tests. So the replacement cost, as you see, is about six thousand dollars, that's what the trade in, and I'll find money and funding for the training class itself, for the officers. It's just an expensive thing. The one we have currently, like I said, is ten years old. If you want me to, I'll just go ahead and move on down through the, what else I got? PD vest, I have a matching grant for this, I've asked for six thousand dollars, state law requires that every five years, I replace bulletproof vests for all my officers. The matching grant only pays fifty percent, but I do see, now that I'm looking at the whole thing here, it looks like the 501 match grant, maybe I can use some of them funds, and then we could pay for the vest with that, government gives us back half. So just a thought, on that one, if you guys wanted to make some adjustments to the six thousand dollars. Police fire camp, glad to announce, we had a great donation from Hendrick's Power, that covered most of the cost of the camp, we've also got donations from other businesses and citizens, so you can go ahead and mark this off of your calendar here, we don't need any money, we've actually raised it, and have all our donations covering that. National night out, I've asked for four thousand dollars, that's less than what we usually ask for, kind of like Mr. Van Leer was saying, this kind of gives back to the community, it's a community day where they come in, meet all the police officers. Will and I have talked, we try to make this more of a town event, where all the departments kind of chip in, and also the council members, you guys have your own booth, meet the public, the fire department, we'll have vehicles there, touch a truck, and some food vendors. So, it's clearly just a town event, kind of give back to the community is what my thoughts are on this. I'll take any questions you have, or if not, I'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie?
Yep. I'm requesting sixteen thousand dollars for bulletproof vests for the fire department. This is for when we respond for unsecure scenes with the police department, and we're going to have a task force for, for the countywide for school shootings. So, we're in preparations with Dr. Nossett at Hendrick's Regional Health, and the career department's on trying to provide our employees with bulletproof vests. And I did receive a grant, and this would, would completely outfit the department for what's left off the grant. My next request is sixty-five thousand dollars to come out of the host fund for repairs at Station 192, out of the men's restroom and shower area, and whatever's left out of that, sixty-five thousand, I'd like to do some remodeling to the kitchen. I will provide you with some pictures. I would really love to take this project out of my budget. So as you can see, first page there, I only have eight thousand dollars to repair and make, make repairs and maintenance items to three buildings. So that eight thousand dollars would have to go for Station 192, headquarters, and Station 191. And as you can see from those pictures, the, the shower area and the restroom is in bad shape. This is basically, comes down to livability, and it's just like your house, maintenance items have to be done, and we have eight guys per shift, and we have one shower and one urinal. Great guys. Our policy states on COVID-19 runs, they have to take a shower after each run, they have to clean up after each run, and our policy also states they cannot wear their uniforms home that they worked in. So we need to upgrade the shower area to at least have two stalls in there, and two restroom facilities.
Robbie, I really don't think this is the place to ask for the money, or, I think we're just looking at how the host fund, I'm sorry, we're running out of time, and I'm trying to run through this other stuff. I think we could deal with this maybe at the end of tonight's meeting, or later.
Well, this is just coming out of priority host projects.
Yeah.
So that's what I was just requesting out of my priority host.
Okay, sorry, okay. Go ahead.
And, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a real quick question, hopefully. These repairs, I know that one of the desires is a new fire station, if, if we could have, if we could create our own timeline, how soon would that happen, in your thoughts?
For a new firehouse?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to have it tomorrow, but...
Well...
Three to five years, I do believe, that's what we're looking at. And, so there's other, there's like six items that really need to be repaired down there.
Okay, they, they can't wait that, three to five years?
No.
Okay.
I know that there's also a parking lot issue with cracks in the parking lot and things like that, could that be something that we would bond?
That would be up to...
I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking about throwing all those expenses into one pot, and, you know, borrowing money like we did for, you know, police vehicles for one percent.
What I'm looking at, there are six major projects that need to be done down there. Addressing the restroom needs, vehicle exhaust plamo system, we need to upgrade that system. OSHA requires us to have those trucks hooked into the exhaust system, so that way, because, because we live there, so we have to have a plamo vent system, that needs to be upgraded. The HVAC needs to be upgraded, we need to paint inside and out, and redo the floors, we need to address the concrete out front, and we need to replace the station overhead doors at 91s and 92s. So for the next five years, I was going to request sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
Sure.
And, because I was just going to try to bite off a little bit at a time. So, that was my request out of the priority projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else? What do we have left? Discretionary. Does anybody want, I want to make a comment, if there's nothing else. So, i- in light of what we're here for, and what I said at the beginning of the meeting, that we should have a budget meeting that includes the host fund, and not two separate worlds. And what I'd like to see is a budget paper, where all these different projects are stuck on to the department they need to be on. And what that would do, of course, would blow out their budgets, and at the end of, one paper, that would have all of this on it, we would see where, or we can see where we are over, over budget, and using the host fund for that. And then, just negate the host fund, and then with that paper, figure out how we get our monies. So, if we have utilities, they might have to increase their taxes, or their, their payments. There's taxes on property, anyway, we get in taxes and try to balance the budget, and at the end of the day, we'll see what we really have to do if we didn't have the host, host fund. What would flush out as things that we can't do, that we can't have onto different department heads, that we may have to use the host fund for. And then, take those parts of, of the over budget, and we can't just stop, we have to get a plan like over five years, or over so many years, to start deducting off the host budget, to bring it down smaller and smaller. So, that's just an idea I have, if anybody else wants to think about it. Jenny, does that sound difficult, or does that sound...
The report doesn't sound difficult at all. Finding that, the, the report's not difficult at all, it's finding the funding.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but the, instead of having these two meetings, we have one budget meeting, like I said at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
And then we see where the projects are, and some projects will be self-funding. At the bottom, we'd pop out with the football, and I know we could probably raise money, you know, make that a big deal, advertise, and collect money to make that work. But, that's what I say we're here for tonight, is to try to figure out how to not use the host fund too much, and try to live off the money that we have. Because in the future, our children are going to need the host fund, and there's not going to be any, any money coming in there. So we want to leave them with something good, and leave the town with something good to, to make it prosper in the future. I mean, right now, we're having more houses come in, tonight, we're going to see some, and places are going to add more residences. So I don't, I don't know, you kind of feel what I'm thinking about. You have any thoughts on that? You're an accountant.
I think, I think it's good to look at all that.
Yeah. All right, we're getting close to time, does anybody else have anything to say?
Jenny, do we still need to go over the discretionary funds?
No, those are just what wasn't spent in 2020, it's like an, an encumbrance process.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Van Leer, you had questions about professional services and IT services, I believe.
Yes, actually, before I go on to that, on the discretionary fund, you talk about encumbrances, so are those items, tree projects, awning, and town hall windows, those have already been approved?
Yes.
And it's not paid for yet?
Correct.
Okay.
They were approved in 2020, and...
Yeah, okay, very good. Circling back around to professional services and technology, I would, again, think that we should take a serious look at our rainy day fund, and paying for those services out of that, because then I think that would ultimately help us move those items out of host into their appropriate line items in the, in our regular accounts, as well as the chiller and the roof and gutters. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Well, we're going to take a little break, it's not seven yet, but any of the council would like to go take a break out in the hall or something? Have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Meeting's closed. Somebody wants to go and come back?